To reply, and we do have you on the bell. And any of you guys who can talk, you know how to kind of talk to the bridges up here, long winded. But anyway, if we could, we'd like to introduce the Commissioner candidates, Bob Stevens, Jack Mill, we have Bill Satter. We've also got this guy down on the end there, his name is Mike Hubbell, and down in there, Ron Ballard. Give him a big hand. Now, one of the ones that fixes bears with him, we're gonna draw names, but we decided to do it like this. We'll start here with the first question, and then we'll go down the line, one, two, three, four, five, and then we'll start. Two will be one, two, three, four, five. Three will be one, two, three, four, five, and that's the way we'll rotate through it. Now, the Astro and Bell, because sometimes I forget, okay? There goes one now. Anyhow, Bill Satter, not very aware, which we want this to be a forum where you can be informed as to these men have given their time that wants to run for county commissioner. And they don't want to do it on purpose. They took the money up, and you see those signs, of course, they don't advertise, on my regular station that they have to have to, at these little dogs of each one of them with pens, you know, we'll have to voice heard. Anyway, we'd like to introduce Bob Stevens. Sorry if Bob tells us, give us some outlook, some options, why you want to run for Commissioner, and what you intend to do.
Well, I decided to run for Commissioner. I've been working for the county for three, right, and three, three and a half years. There is an open space there. I'm a conservative campaigner, so we're both, and I come by it pretty honestly. My real name is Scottson, so I believe in getting the biggest thing for the buck. We have a lot of things in district one, and also in O'Leary County. If we need to take care of, I can do it from the fore. Most of the people know our roads. Most of us have eaten the best thereof, and found a path over to the railroad. We've got a lot of things that need to be done. We've got bridges. We also have to move it through for a new jail. We've got to figure out how to run some of this stuff. So there's a lot of things ahead of us, and I feel qualified to do that at the point. Fifty-two years, get right here and in, but I've been fifty-two years in the automatic car sprinkler industry. I've done the first 100% sprinkler high-rise building in the world. The designs that I've incorporated in it are being used today throughout the world in high-rise buildings. I've worked as a purchasing agent, and very successfully there. I've worked for several, several, there have been six companies in my life, over fifty-two years, and in doing so, I have run some very large construction projects, managed them, brought them in under budget. I've had as many as one-five guys working underneath me at one time on one project. You don't think that's not a hidden problem, besides being one of the other trades in the industry? I feel confident that if I am elected, I can handle what is before us, and what needs to be done in the district.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Doug. Tell me why you're running, Jack, what you did.
Bill, I just feel like I'm sort of overwhelmed.
You need to put that mic in two rounds, or spin it back road.
I don't. That's worse than here. No, I'm, I just kind of concerned along the road around the city as well, because I feel like we approach a little different vision from what has been there for a while. Done, I'm satisfied with what you're saying. I, so about being a private, do what's better, the plan.
Okay. I've got my bank account, my art student's URL copied in here, and string them in.
Great industrial education, catalog is fine. I don't think we have all the problems here on the, you know, the government side of the town. So, I'll make calls, I'll, 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 I'll.
Okay. What else?
Thank you, Jack. Let me get this one, I got to do a little bit. Bill Satter is next. Bill, tell me who, what, where, and when you want.
Well, Bill Satter, I've been a little, you know, like, I was still in O'Leary, but there's still a, to, those things on the journey, I took that big, big business. I went to work for O'Leary County in 1985, and I didn't get anything between O'Leary County and Tulsa County ever since. I've learned an awful lot about those ones, and I feel like I can make a lot of changes with mental planning to, to the roads in this county. Another one of the big things is that I think this county needs to change. What I think, a lot of our people said to build Tulsa for, they were spending their money in Tulsa, not bringing it back. It wouldn't get big work in this county if it's, you know, ten or fifteen small businesses, and pull it twenty or twenty-five people, we get all the money. The more money we can get, keep in this county, the more tax rates will add to it, and I'd just like to be yourself, see what I can do. I'm not a big talker, but I'm a hard worker, and that's one thing that I will be dedicated to do with this county.
Thank you, Bill. Can you help Bill out in the back here? Of course, I know you can hear me, because I'm a little, uh, Hubbell, tell us about it.
First of all, I'd like to thank the, thanks, Jemra Homers, for hosting this event. I'd like to welcome everybody, and thank you for your time coming to listen to us. Before I introduce myself, I'd like to introduce my wife Cindy, we're back in there. I'm Mike Hubbell, I'm the chairman for District One County Commission. I've lived thirty-five years in this county. I am, my grandson, which was born a month ago, is the sixth generation of Hubbell, Phil and O'Leary County, on both the Hubbell side and the Buckle side. We're well rooted in O'Leary County. I'm a past member of the Dexter Lions Club, current member of the Crosswalk Baptist Church, and a past chairman of administrative council for the United Methodist Church. I have a bachelor's of business administration from Eastern Mexico University with minors in the county, and work. My public administration experience involves Vegas school. I am on my twenty-third year of serving in Vegas school, work. I have been elected or re-elected for five terms. Due by experience with Vegas school, I go first in open meeting lots, personnel law, overseeing an eight and a half, ninety-dollar budget, and providing insight to the school on many of our building projects such as this. I'm a self-employed businessman. I'm currently a general contractor. I specialize in building Justin homes. I was a oil producer in O'Leary County for fifteen years, and drilled over fifty oil wells in O'Leary County. I manage projects every day. Every day I'm managing projects. Right now, I'm managing four projects. Which guys do well, which should be another county commissioner. Not only can they oversee the roads, going to the district, as well as all the county assets, they're the principal administrator of business managers for the county. They receive and expend all funds, and make major financial decisions, prepare budgets, award contract, tracks, action on plan, act on the testament of needs for each county official, ensuring physical responsibility on the part of all county officials that handle county projects. They provide some rural fire protection, county health, as well as other duties. As far as employees, I expect them to show up to work on time and ready to work. I expect them to work as hard as I'm working, and I expect them to be an economic benefit to the residents of the county. For being a successful, the employees of the district have to be successful, and it will be my job to make sure they have the tools, equipment, the terror, and know-how to perform their job successfully. If elected, I would participate to become certified in basic community education program offered to OSU, still on it. I would appreciate your consideration for voting for me as your next District One County Commissioner.
Thanks, Mike. Did any of you, uh, Hubbell tell us?
Yes.
All right, I don't know who this guy is, anyway. He might introduce himself. No, I can't say this. This is Ron Ballard. He fixed 250 perjury. Of course, you already had it on the project, just make me feel good, Ron.
He shut you up, didn't he?
He not shut you up.
Then you quit riding that third.
Oh, you know, make yourself sound.
Did you have a four?
Yeah, no, I called in, old walkie.
I got a larger decision.
I didn't do it.
Okay, I'm Ron Ballard, I must have you know me, I think. Been the county commissioner, been the pastor eight years, three, three and a half years ago. I had all kinds of plans, and this is the one I'm doing. Things happen, but I hope they're better. I think people see what we were able to do the next year we wasn't in our office. You can't hear me?
Can I stop him a little?
So, anyway, I would like to get back in there and finish what I did get started during my eight years. We had nine female player disasters, three disasters that wasn't declared, and that, I'm saying that because that pulled us away from all of our work schedule. There were a lot of other projects that I wanted to get done, I couldn't do them because we were over here playing catch-up, trying to get the roads fixed, get the bridges put back in, or whatever, that was needed during the disaster time. Also, I worked with Creek Nation, and at that time, Creek Nation expected the county, district, wherever they stood the road, they had to go out and get the road, make it prepared, get the tin horns for the driveways, or any cross tin horn on the road. We had them in place myself. Even that took us away from our extra road program that we wanted to do. God bless Creek Nation, because we got set sixteen miles last fall road, that during my term, that we didn't have. We got another mile out here at the City VT grant, down Winchester, and we got seventeen miles of last fall road that we didn't have when I came in office. Fifteen and a quarter miles of chip seal, that's what you see the hard surface county roads, that's what they, excuse me. That's what that is, it's a chip seal. We were having fifteen and a quarter, I'd say. There was three bridges that was already programmed when I come in office, we got all three of those completed. I completed three more that I had programmed, and I programmed three more, so it was nine total. Out of the last three that was programmed, two of them, I also programmed some more bridges that will be upcoming in this district, as well as the two and three that will be coming up in the next couple of years. Just waiting on the funding, the way it goes down through the pockets. On the bridge program, I served as vice chair of the CED district, out of Skowt, and that's made up of eight different counties. One commissioner from each county represents each county, and I was vice chair of that. Out of those eight counties, I was elected by that board to represent the eight counties on the state board. I sat on the state board about two years. And I wanted to do that, and I really strived to do that, so I could be in the know, because that state board is the one that makes the decisions on a lot of the funding for bridges, roads, or whatever. I wanted to be on the, on the front line of that, and it did really help me. So, we're gonna, O'Leary County as a whole is gonna reap benefits from the fact that we did get on there and get some. So, for bridges program, there is a lot of new funding, depending on the roads and bridges that wasn't available when I first came in office. Used to, we had to submit plans to the county, to the state, rather, to spend our own county bridge money. The August that I went out, oh, I went out my last year in August, what was I trying to say, in August, the state sent all that money to the county. That charged the commissioners with overseeing that, and we had to program all those bridges and make sure there's money there on the federal side. The federal, feds put in eighty percent, you take twenty percent out of local money, and that's what we get in local funds, is he comes off of, uh, what am I trying to say? License page, license page, and this might, that goes into that particular deal, but let me, okay, answer. It is, okay. Anyway, I appreciate you both, I think you can see that I've got a little bit of issue with it, I'd like to get back in and finish all this stuff.
Thanks, Ron. Uh, Adam, in case y'all don't know, that's how I love it, I use that for, that's why I don't have to go to heaven. I get to go to heaven because I was a dad. And God said, "There ain't no way a good man has to work for that," down in Haiti, so I've got the free ride to heaven. Anyhow, gentlemen, we want to remind you now, you're only on one and a half minute to answer a question, and I've got the big guy back there, back in the blue shirt, he's got stopwatch, and he raises his hand, it'll have you about thirty seconds for you to wind up this question. Also, I have the sheriff, he's sitting over here, and he just puts fresh bullets in his gun, so I didn't say it before. Okay, we've got questions here, sack. And the first question that we have, it says, "Tell Paul around the job." All right, let's see. Now, we're gonna do this again, we'll start one, two, three, four, five, and we're gonna do one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, that'll be fair, so whoever speaks last is gonna make the most impression, so that's why we're gonna round a lot of these things. How do you plan on maintaining our infrastructure while still moving forward with capital improvements? We'll address that to you, you're on the end.
Next, very good question. Money's tight, and like I said, we're gonna have to evaluate everything that comes before us. It's not gonna be just a stamp, it's done, we're gonna have to get the biggest land to the block we can get, we're gonna have to see about every possible angle to get funding for it, and we'll, we'll make it go, but it might not be at the speed we would like to sometimes, but it will happen.
Thank you. Jack, how do you plan on maintaining the infrastructure while still moving forward with capital improvements?
A lot of it will depend on, you know, one day at a time, just go out there. As far as, you know, I don't actually know, I don't know, we have to just kind of all level with it, kind of, just kind of rolling, what they're all, what they're figuring out like, we won't make, we won't make, we won't make everything. College of Patient, we'll just, you know, kind of get, get much out of it, and I don't, I don't really know how to pull out smoke on the stage, we're going to, it's like, I don't know.
Thanks, Jack. Bill, how do you plan on maintaining our infrastructure while still moving forward with capital improvement?
I'd like to just keep things as minimal as possible for now, and try to promote more businesses in this county to increase revenue, to promote infrastructure. Really, what's the key, to keep, you got all the, got all the teams now thinking, and just keep focused on the future, and try to make it things slowly towards a better for O'Leary County.
Thank you, Bill. Mike, how do you plan on making and maintaining our infrastructure while still moving forward with capital improvements?
I think it would be important to go in with a fresh set of eyes, and look at the methods and operations of the county. Surely, there's things that can be changed, save money, be more effective than what's being going on. Look at grant possibilities, look at getting funds from legislature, lobbying the legislature, and trying to look at a new set of eyes.
Thanks, Mike. Ron, how do you plan on maintaining the infrastructure while still moving forward with capital
Well, again, I've got the experience already behind me, but we're left, and each district, it gets about a hundred thousand a month, and sixty-seven thousand of this fuel tax, this math, there is a, a half-cent sales tax that we loaded in, and each district gets around thirty to thirty-three thousand. It varies up to about, so just a little over a hundred thousand, about half-cent generates and it is divided equal to between three, so out of that, you pay your, by your rock, by your oil, whatever, fuel, you pay your man, out of that, this math. As far as capital improvement, I'm not sure what you're gaining at, or looking at out there. You know, the, all of the trucks or anything like that is bought out of that same fund, but there, there are grants available out there that I was able to obtain, several grants for equipment, this and that. You just have to get in there and learn, learn, play the game, so. That's just pretty much it, I mean, it, it will, sales support itself, you do have to watch it, it's not like we've got a whole bunch of money to play with, there's always been money there that, that you have to watch, please, what really hurts you, I'm bringing a female here, that has, you have to, you have enough money on hand, in case we have a disaster, whatever. Luckily, we've got another fund that we can draw from, to draw for emergency.
Talking a little bit.
All right, now, when we move this way, we'll be number one. Jack, if elected as county commissioner, how will you work with the Vegas school district?
First of all, a problem, there's something on this old road, up here, this old road, it's excessive speed all the time, there's, there's a hill up there, and you just have something done to where people aren't making each other in the middle of the road, it's not wide enough, some need to, need to widen out, and that area. The, the other roads, they all need to have more work done to them, for the nation, hey, we need to have the roads around the school here, they really should be some priority roads, have blacktop, and long line, something for we, and, you know, to be proud of, and, you know, show the other people coming in during, and, um, be good roads, so kids can spend on their kids. That's what I give them out of here.
Thanks, Jack. Bill, if elected county commissioner, how will you work with the Vegas school district?
First of all, is to maintain the press routes, that's the most important thing with the school district, is to get it, get the bus down, get the children. Another thing that I've noticed, up here on this north road, this point, you get seventy-five on the railroad tracks, there's no crossing over there, you know, mile north, but there isn't. You know, we get buses, and families that come down that road every day, and get the school back, would be my first problem, is to get the crossing, or the railroad track. I understand that Western Drive up here is already on a program through the Creek Nation to be funded, to, to be open later. I would work towards getting this north road done. Some of the things that I've already been, that Vegas school district is a guy by the name of Ray Hester, and I built a, 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 a school here. And I worked with a man by the name of Kenny Bierjuske Skelton, and we built the town for the elementary schools, so I'm all about that for the schools.
Thanks, Bill. Mike, if elected county commissioner, how will you work with Vegas school district?
Well, I think it's very important to have a communication, not only with Vegas, but pressing between hills. Some of the things we can do is help with snow removal, which would require employees to come in a little earlier at some point, just communicating with the schools, their needs. In the past, county commissioners have helped Vegas schools with building sites, help building paths. I just think it needs to be a partnership between the schools and the county commissioner.
Thanks, Mike. Ron, if elected county commissioner, how will you work with the Vegas school district?
Well, I did fix the north road over there, you should have seen it before we fixed it. On the issues that come up about the railroad crossing, that will be funded this year, it will be put in there, and it's no cost to the county, no cost to the school. It's between the railroad and the federal highway safety that's going to fund that. When I was in there, it was a hundred and seventy-five thousand crossing, now it's three-hundred or something now. As you said, the, the Creek Nation has already got this on their chip sheet, to start at sixteen and go north, go out a few miles, that's one, take care of the bunks there. While we're talking about the north road, the little bridge that's coming off of the highway, most of you know there's gonna be a road widening and everything, all of that will go, and all of that will be safely, safely too. I worked with the school up here, Cindy and I discussed different problems when they moved off of the traffic to the north road, that's exactly why we fixed that north road, because it threw off of the traffic going there, and we were trying to alleviate having people coming in from the south, we worked it all from the north and exited out on the south, so, you know, we, I have worked with the school and continue to do that later.
Thanks, Ron. Next question is gonna be for Bill Satter, if you like him. That's the one. What's that, I remember that song. When they fought, you started with Jack. Can you wake the school, and you can't? Is he fucking starved? You ever? I ain't never planned nothing, I got that guy on the change. They're about the same age, so you just hang in there, big boy. If you're elected county commissioner, how are you gonna help the county school?
Well, we need to work hand in hand with each other. When it's snowing, we need it removed. When our roads need repairing, we need fixing. As much as possible, we need the best roads in the town coming to our school. Outsiders come in here, and thank God, I guess the state's gonna fix widened highway, get rid of that suicide bridge down there, seventy-five, and we also need railroad crossing, I'd like to hear if that's coming about, but working with them, or work hand in hand, and see that things get accomplished for the betterment of our community.
Thank you, and I want to still, uh, apologize.
You have, you have to bear with us, we're all proud of that. All right, so I guess we've got this, that's five, so then we've gotta go back over to the bill, now, we start one. I appreciate it. Jerry, you're supposed to be watching.
I'm just, yeah.
Well, you didn't try enough, you need to stand up. Anyway, Bill, if elected county commissioner, will you help the city of Vegas, and this is the way they said that, with a terrible condition of our city road? That's just what they read it.
Well, I haven't done some work in the city state before, we, when Ron was mayor, we had chips here, we just rubbed around, but I haven't noticed a whole lot since then. Things could have changed since I was working for O'Leary County, I used to understand that the county commissioners are all on bad obligations to help the cities under certain populations, provided they have a bunch of this, uh, you know, the county don't have a whole lot of funds, I'm sure there's some that they can help the city with, and the city can put in some of the money to get the effects done with, but the city certainly did the work to help them out, you know, with the little Vegas don't have a lot of money, uh, just work hand in hand with them, and, you know, combine their crews together, you can get a lot of things done, and just work together, that's the thing, everybody work with each other, don't be arguing, just give them their job, that's it.
Thanks, Bill. Mike, how will you help the Vegas city with a terrible condition of their roads? Mike, "How would you help the big city with a terrible condition of their roads?"
I'm a resident of begs, so I understand the question. I think it needs to be a joint venture, the city and the county with looking for roads. I don't think it can be one-sided on each side. I think, again, communication is important. Try to get a plan, maybe the city can take some, the county can some, you know, just try to work through the follows.
Thank you. Ron, "How will you help the elected county commissioner, the terrible roads in the big city?"
I'm on check. As Bill said, when I was mayor, we was able to do some chip seal, it was done with some money from a grant that was given to city begs for drainage and street repair, and that's about the last time any major improvement has been done. The county road inventory, the city on roads are on the county road inventory, meaning that every month we get money at the county level for all the city streets, the city miles that's in there. Uh, you know, but there's just so much money to go, we had about, what I remember, about three hundred and sixty-four miles that we maintained in this reform, and you start dividing that up, it just doesn't leave a whole lot there. Uh, again, I think that, uh, there hasn't been a good working relationship between the county and the city. I won't say back since I was mayor, because Richard flood, I did do that, and we hired the county, paid them their, uh, their, uh, fuel and cost of their material, this and that, they donated to play, so that was safe, why we say we did what we did, but I agree that it needs to be more done to it, and will be done. Again, I didn't have time, because I was laying people against each other.
Thanks, Ron. Okay, here's my friend, Governor Stroud, my friend's brother. If elected county commissioner, how in the world are you gonna take care of the city road?
Well, make ourselves popular with everybody. Because there's plenty of them in the city. We'll have to work together, that's just plain and simple. And as the money's available, I think we'll get our heads together in the city hall, down at the county barn, and we'll decide what needs to be done, approach it, work on it, and get it accomplished. It can't be a one-sided deal, and point your finger at each other, it's gonna have to be a joint effort.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. Big Jack, "If elected county commissioner, how will you help the city of begs with a terrible condition of the roads?"
All of us, all I started by trying to, uh, start it with the biggest problem, was taking a pill or five, uh, combat man, where they're stable, and then after you get that done, we try to go in here and kind of do something, so the, uh, the ditches, and how they, uh, build up on the sides of roads, and turn a lot of our roads into ditches. And, yeah, anytime you hold it, moisture inside it, you know, underneath your, your asphalt or anything else, and then your nice, everything just deteriorates quickly. So you need to fix our drainage, get all that stuff, you know, what we, what we do will last.
Thank you, David. Mr. Sander, "The school's trying to focus on health safety, would you be willing to help the school get some sidewalks for a walking school program?"
My job. The school's trying to focus, I feel that. Alright, alright, the school's trying to focus on health safety, and well, maybe you help the school get some sidewalks for a walking school program? Yes, I have a very good working relationship with the school, all the ditch veterans and employees. I think it would be great. We have already started a walking trail program, we've kept it in the three nations, we've done it, started to build out here, a path. Uh, Mexico is very big on health. Uh, we have a healthy eating program, we just got a large heat grant, a pet grant, which helps all of the kids and residents in exercising. I think it's very important that we help the schools with their health program, and looking at sidewalks, probably through grants, if we need a way to go.
Thank you. I notice it was hard to hear, it's ninety-five, we're actually loving, I'm reading, we're probably don't need to add that. "The school's trying to focus on health safety, would you be willing to help the school get some sidewalks for a walking school program?"
Well, that would be out, because the community gets the use of all of these facilities up here, because it's hard tax dollars that they pay for, whether it's grants or water or pay for it one way or the other. Again, the county could come in and do whatever they need to do to assist the school, and we're all public, but, um, there is, um, some grants available that the county could assist in, maybe use some leverage with the workers or whatever to, to do that. I'm not above saying that, I would wanna promise that we're gonna do that, so we'll see exactly how, how the guidelines are, are on it, which I'm sure is gonna be a bit of money and makes a lot of waxing itself, but, again, we'll, we'll help the school with whatever we need to do.
Thanks, Ron. Alright, Jerry, who's next?
Hi there.
Okay, yeah, "The school's trying to focus on health safety, would you be willing to help the school get some sidewalks for a walking school program?"
But, what we'll have to do, because we can put a sidewalk down, we're gonna have to get to lighten some of the roads, we're gonna have to get crossing drains, we're gonna have to add some storm drains, we can't just put a sidewalk down and cut it, it just doesn't work. So there's some things we have to look at in order to accomplish that, and there again, that it has to come from some kind of the brain, you know, to make it feasible, everybody is still doing, you're gonna have some guidelines, it comes down from the federal system, and, uh, we've been fifty-two years following America, before I'm a current mayor, and I'm working here, but yes, I do.
Thanks, Bob. Jack, do you have any thought?
Yeah, I, uh, got a bachelor's degree out of, uh, where I, uh, you know, there were fields, okay, and I'm very hard body, uh, and it's that type of situation for, you know, hospitals, all. The, uh, when I was up there, I started my professional, I mean, I was taking so high a stock, I'm three, my road called Three Out, and I call it, uh, prepare my matches at that time. Since then, I've operated my own businesses, all since nineteen seventy-seven, and, uh, I've been, you know, back home, so long now, so I go through the background of all this.
Thanks, Jeff. Mr. Sander, do you have any college education?
Now, actually, I only, uh, education, I had up in the high school, so, thank you for trying. Give me quick, I've been, uh, I have been through all the road cover courses, I'm still learning, and, uh, that's about it.
Thank you. Mike, "Your college education?"
I have a bachelor's of business leadership, with higher county, under the Army, from Eastern Mexico University, in Portales, Mexico.
Ron, "Do you have any education?"
Yeah, I've been at the college, just driving through, went to football, and, uh, when I graduated here at beg's high school, I joined the army in January of that year, and as soon as I had graduated, I was activated to place of training, AIT training, right there, took the electrician's training, I can act, and, uh, seven years I was a combat engineer, we, we dealt with building the bridges, we built the roads, whatever come about, we were there. So, that's, uh, I guess I had school hard knocks, but I've been exposed to a lot of construction, there's everything, so, actually, when I was even in high school, I was working on construction part there, so, been exposed to, but I can still do it.
Thank you. Next question. Where do you see District One in four years, roads, ditches, signs, and bridges?
Well, I'm thinking, where are they, hopefully, you know, hopefully we'll have a lot of their roads, hopefully, but, uh, I know there will be better ditches that have to be, the, uh, a lot of us will depend on, uh, our ability, or get, uh, ready money, or fund ready, or whatever, but, uh, it's gonna be a lot of teamwork, all the chicken, you know, as well, you know, businesses, and, like, already, high vegetation, it is actually, I see, I see a couple of them, go ahead.
Thanks, Jack. Bill, "Where do you see District One in four years, roads, ditches, signs, and bridges?"
As far as roads, Bill, I, I see a lot of, uh, in order to have, uh, uh, we can get an extensive ditching, covering, uh, roads, I'm starting, uh, as far as bridges, I think, when you got your bridges, that you can get, get help, fill up the paths, and then there's another type of bridge, you should, there are a lot of which, as I said, it's still construction bridges, we're working towards getting those. Uh, signs, I don't know if it's still there, but at one time, uh, when Mr. Coub, this commissioner, they started making those signs. Uh, signs are very, uh, that's signs, you can use, uh, with, obviously, uh, spot signs, lightning, lightning, and actually, bridge markers and things, uh, but only as far as roads, Bill, is we're gonna first gonna get ditches, we're gonna, uh, roads are starting up, and, uh, find for all the funds that you can get, for chip seal, asphalt, whatever you're gonna get, so, certainly, they'll get out of it.
Mike, "Would you see this district in four years?"
Well, I think the biggest problem for the county is road, I think we're gonna see an unprecedented amount of road in northern part of county. I think it's something that can be a lot of tiny infrastructure, the road creates a lot of problems, it also brings some portable line effects, it could be a good thing. Uh, I just think it's gonna take some careful timing, and it's gonna have to look forward.
Thank you, Mike. Ron, "Where do you see District One in four years, older, two years, still around you?"
Uh, again, there, there's gonna be a lot more demand for roads, bridges, this and that, it's because of the amount of people that's moving in this community, we're getting, we're kind of a better community for Dawson County, and they expect the same services that they were getting up there. One claim that I was, was in the process of doing, just did not follow through with it, because it's very time demanding, and that was to implement and planning its own information for the county. And the reason for that, not to put any hardship on any individual, but to get control of this north end. Uh, a good example of it is Wacker County, they got broken down on one side, they got the lake on the other, they don't worry about somebody going there, but they got to have control over it there, and that's what we're getting, getting ready to be up here, because all the influx of businesses and stuff that's coming from the north end, and, uh, as far as, uh, the county has never been involved, really, uh, well, I guess they have been involved as far as getting, oh, the grants for water districts and stuff running through the county, but that's gonna have to be something, it's really gonna have to be addressed because of the influx of people coming in, because a lot of the area is, uh, is not maxed out and what they can, can supply on this water.
I want to thank you gentlemen for coming to this forum, and of course, the question that they would ask if you did on your intro, and if you're running for county commissioner, why you ran for county commissioner, you folks giving Scott the big hand up. Thank you, Sheriff, I appreciate you, you didn't have to draw your gun one time. Nicky, thank you for being my, uh, time giver, and of course, the commissioners will be here if you would like to come up, and again, there's no spitting, there's no throwing out, no fighting, no testing, and no false accusations, because each one of them has two attorneys, same way that I'm in a car. Again, thank you all, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce, give them a hand, and, uh, thank you, we have some areas happening, next time we come up, we will have some examples. Thank you, Ron, appreciate the thought. Thank you, yes, folks, it's a great community, you're some wonderful people, and I'll see you all in the football season.